What's that?
Overall, the application.
Okay, that's fine. Yep, okay. All right, so it's, I don't know.
6:09.
6:09. We go back into session. I have to announce that this is being recorded by Area 58 Television. And if you would join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with Mr. Dunn and his Class II online license application. Do you want to just tell, do you have to get up to that or can you?
Yeah, that would be good.
If you come up to that, because it's all being recorded, so we get it accurate. Can you just give us your name and what you plan to do and so on?
Mr. Dunn, I'm going to do like online full sale, buying and selling, you know, secondhand vehicles. It's mostly deal-to-dealer interaction, so it's like, we buy from, you know, dealers and we sell to local dealers, kind of like help, you know, put inventory against the people and kind of keep every product.
Do you keep the cars on property?
Not really. Most of the time, it's just kind of, we buy from one place and it gets transported to where they're going to the end, essentially.
This is a public hearing. Did you open the public hearing?
Oh, is this a public hearing?
It is a public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, right. Okay, so, yeah, so this was a, scheduled as a public hearing, and we, I guess I would make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous. Okay, so you are, you're in the industrial park?
Correct.
And you don't plan to keep any cars on-site or anything like that?
No, not really.
Okay, because I think, I think as long, everybody who's signed off on this has said that as long as...
My physical office is there, like, you know, you know, the brick-and-mortar part of like, you know, our office where we kind of, you know, we have to have an address to be real to people, you know? Not in the house or something, you know?
I think all of the people that tend to sign off on this said as long as it's online, it's not going to be a problem. Okay. All right, any questions from the board?
No, everything here seems to be in order.
And previous experience in Abingdon, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So on the license, I did think it has a list of restrictions. You've got to keep it in the packet?
Online sales only, no cars offered for sale on premises, display of vehicles on premises, no show 'em on premises, no repair of vehicles on premises, no storage of vehicles on premises, no business sign, property must be kept in good condition and free of debris at all times, and no equipment or product displays visible from the street.
Yeah. Let me check all those boxes?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anyone else here for discussion about the Class II license to Mr. Dunn? I see no other people wishing to talk. We can close the public hearing and then vote. So I'll move that we close the public hearing on the used car dealer license, Class II.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, so next will be motion to approve the used car dealer license, Class II, to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles online.
So moved.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations. Good luck.
Good luck to you.
Successful.
You're all set. She's the lady you want to talk to.
What I'm going to do is I'm going to make up the license, I'm going to have her sign it, and then I will contact you tomorrow. And we have a couple of people that we should do. I'm pretty sure I've got everything, but I hope you bring them along. No, I think I have. But I'll be here in a while.
All right. Cam's pretty good.
Thanks, guys.
She didn't get some, she'll let you know. Okay, that's, so, 6:15. Now, this is not a public hearing.
No.
No. This is just a transfer of license.
Yep.
Okay, so it is, I have about 6:15.
I got, yeah, 6:14.
Pretty close.
Yep.
All right, so the next thing up is Mr. Patel. Hi. And do you want to just tell us who you are and what is your, how you do here?
My full name is Shishka Patel. I just work at Subway down the street on 300 Plymouth Street, Unit 4, so just transferring the license to the owners.
And you're going to run it the same as you have in the past?
Yes.
Has it, has been in the past? I like going there myself, so.
You have the usual?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Do you have a business experience as far as other restaurants or other?
This is my fourth location.
Okay.
I live in Wareham, I got two in Wareham, one in Rainham, and this is the fourth.
Excellent.
So I have Subway for almost eleven years now.
Okay, great. There you go. Wish you luck.
Okay, all right. So we need to, we did get an email from Elvira Ferrera, listing, listed current owner. Said, "I'm in Florida due to an urgent matter and I consent to the transfer of license to Mr. Patel's company ASAP." So I will make that motion to transfer the common victor license.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Congratulations.
Good luck to you.
And will be in touch with you?
Yes, I can call on you tomorrow. I'm going to have to sign this, the DVI number, and the other thing is that you have to apply the business certificate.
Okay, so Mr. Fryer is here for his 6:30 interview, so I suppose we'll probably just hold on to that for a few minutes. And we can go up and do warrants and commitments.
I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Payroll warrant number 63 for $438,756.99. Vendor warrant number 64 for $179,638.43. Withholding warrant number 65 for $152,596.68. Ambulance commitments 1230-24 through 1525 for $62,163.20.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move to approve of the following warrant and commitments. Vendor warrant number 66 for $107,908.49. Ambulance commitments 1620-25 through 112-2025 for $82,861.50.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Going down to approval of the minutes of January 7, 2045. Tom, you want to make that motion?
I'm sorry, one more time?
Approval of the minutes, January 7?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the selectmen minutes from January 7, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Farmers Market. I have a notice here from Mr. Stephen King on South Street, would like to host a farmer's market. This is the same one that was done last year, right?
Yeah, they've done it for the past few years.
Yep, okay. And so his dates would be 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM on May 31st, June 7th, 14th, 28th, July 5th, 12th, 19th, 26th, August 2, 9th, 16th, 23, 30th, September 6, 13th, 20, 27th, and October 4, 11th, and 18th. Mr. King will be on-site from opening to closing and will oversee the operation. It's been very successful for the last several years, so I think everybody gets a big kick out of having it in town, so. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the farmer's market for the dates as listed.
I would just mention that contingent upon a certificate of insurance.
Oh, okay. Yep, contingent on...
And just a quick question on that. How do we indemnify the town based on the different vendors that come in from the farmer's market? Is the farmer's market named as like a master policy holder on all those from each vendor? Correct.
Okay, do we have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Annual town meeting dates?
Yeah, so I talked about doing this in the past, just to make sure everyone's on the same page. Excuse me. So I put together a proposed calendar here going into the town meeting season, so it really starts, we're in the thick of it now, but the calendar starts on February 11th, which is your next meeting, which you would tentatively vote to open the warrant. By March 1st, all zoning articles must be submitted to the planning board. March 11th, any petitioned articles will be due to the Board of Selectmen, and you would vote to close the warrant. The Finance Committee tentatively approves their recommended budget for fiscal '26 on March 17th. I put March 20th in as a placeholder for the planning board to hold a public hearing on any zoning articles. March 25th, proposed joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to review the FY '26 proposed budget. April 8th, you would review and approve the final warrant. 11th, the warrant goes to print, goes out in the mail a couple weeks later, and then we have town meeting on May 12th.
Did, we already submit the zoning board, zoning review committee recommendations to the planning board?
We have not, because we're going to be meeting again in the beginning of February, and we'll send those at that time.
Okay. And the earth removal bylaws, not a zoning bylaw, is that right?
No, that is just a general bylaw.
Okay. All right, any questions on the calendar by anyone?
Nope, makes sense.
Okay, we don't need to do anything on that, really?
No, no, it was more just...
So it does, it does bring up, I think everyone should have a copy of the draft warrant, I'm sorry, our draft town report. Did you both know yet?
I did, yep, I read it.
And I don't know, you know, I just drafted what I could remember and what I could think of. I don't think you changed it too much, Cody.
I did not, no. There were one or two things I just changed.
Yeah, putting names in that, I forgot. So I don't know if anybody on the board has any comments, suggestions, questions, anything? It has to be, let's see, we have to have it in by...
Today.
Today.
No, I, I think you hit the nail on the head, John. I feel bad, I would have jumped in, but you pretty much covered what I thought we needed to cover, so.
Okay. Tom, any questions, anything?
Same.
All right, so I guess we'll move to accept it, I suppose?
Yeah, submit.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we submit the, the town report as, now says draft confidential and make it as our annual report.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have liaisons for collective bargaining to deal with?
Yes, so we are, we have, we historically have had five different collective bargaining units. We have just added two, as, as you know, in our clerical and library units. We'll be bar, starting to bargain with them in the next month or so. So with that, I thought it would be good to just redo the assignments of the, of all of the unions. Again, I don't anticipate having to meet much with any of the other ones at this time, but since we're, we're looking at all of them. So right now, we have police patrol officers, police superior officers, fire department, mixed unit, highway, and now the clerical and library. Typically, highway and mixed unit has been the same person, and then police patrol and police superior officers has been the same person, because the contracts are similar. And then I'd recommend that clerical and library be the same liaison as well.
Okay. Jonathan, you want the clerical and library one?
I'll take it. I mean, I think you guys both have two, I have one, so that would even things out a little bit.
Okay, Tom, you have a preference on?
I don't.
Police, fire, or mixed highway?
I'll defer to you.
All right, I'll stick with the police then, because I've done that in the past.
And I, I wouldn't mind sticking with fire, since I've done that in the past as well.
All right, so then, Tom, you've got the?
Mixed highway.
Highway and everybody else, okay.
That was easy.
Settle that question. It's on the side of this, oh, here, okay. Amy Troop resignation from beautification. So we have a email, let's see here. We have an email that was sent by Amy Troop on December 31st to Shirley Graff, who was the chairman of the beautification committee. "I am issuing my resignation to the committee to open up to a member that may have more time and a fresh perspective." I think Cody and I talked about this, so usually this goes to the town clerk, but the town clerk has said she's satisfied with this. Do we, we accept the resignation, I suppose, is what?
Yeah, you would, you would accept the resignation. You are appointed authority for beautification.
Okay. All right, any discussion about this?
No, I want to thank Amy for her time, and I think we should put a letter together for her, for thanking her for her time on beautification.
Okay. All right, so I'll take that as a motion to accept the resignation with those two conditions.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We can post that as a new opportunity for someone. Fieldstone Farm Horse Shows. This is an annual thing. I don't think it's any different than usual.
Yeah, so we have, I know Mr. Clausen has come before you in the past. We figured it wasn't necessary tonight, because it's kind of, this is an annual thing. The reason that it is before you for your approval is, there's a, in the consent agreement, there's a limit of, I think, 38 days, and the request is for 47. So he was looking for more days than in the consent agreement, but the consent agreement does allow for the board to basically issue that approval.
How many did you do last year, do you know?
So what it is, is so he's allowed eight multiple day horse show days, so that's two or more. So he has 10, so we're just approving two more.
And he had 10 last year, I believe, too?
He did, because last year we had the same, because I went through the year, I'm like, I think he had a couple, two, you know?
Yep.
Multiple. And so that's when we did have him come in. I did check with the police chief, there were no incidents over the summer of, you know, from last year, and I checked the board of health, and there were no issues.
Okay. Okay, any discussion?
Well, I just, you know, I just, you know, the insurance guy in me just goes to bullet point number 17 here, on page 6 of 11 of the draft, which I know is a dated one, but at least 10 days prior to the commitment of a horse show, Clausen agrees to provide a list of proposed vendors. I'm just curious again about the insurance. Who holds the insurance? Is it Clausen, or is it each individual vendor? Because if there are 47 different individual days, that's a lot of backwork for insurance verification, which I would propose to be mandatory for each day. That's a good question, I can certainly look into that.
You want to defer this then till the next meeting? We don't have to do anything just yet.
Should we do it with a contingent?
I would be fine with that.
Yeah?
But I think the insurance is important and vital, to be clear about who's holding it and who's backchecking that, because if it's 47 different days with different vendors each day, something could get lost. Yeah, well, we can definitely look, but I would tend to request that it fall on Mr. Clausen and, and maybe a blanket, because you're right, we're not verifying that. It's hard to verify 47 different days with 10 different vendors each day. We will reach out and get an answer from that. I would be fine with making a motion to approve that, subject to that insurance verification.
I would second that.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? All right. We just accepted your resignation.
That's okay.
Okay?
Yes.
All right, next up is Brian Kling. Mr. Kling has an application to use Halifax Town Green on June?
21st.
What number is that?
21st.
21st?
Yeah, at least according to this, it's the 21st.
Ah, okay. June 21st, 2024, for a fur festival.
2025.
2025, right?
Yep.
For a fur festival. Not sure what that's all about, but I think he's done it in the past, too, so.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion? Do we want to make a motion to approve, we have used the ground, the greens available, is that right?
We're good.
Yeah, it is available. I know that usually Halifax Pride has it roughly on around that date, but they're going to be over to the side, and last year, I think Halifax Pride was here, and they were able to function together at, you know?
At the same day?
I think it was, that's what he said.
Wow.
Because, yeah, but he's not going to be on this side, probably with the stairs on, and that way.
Okay.
That's what he had said. But he, she's not on the calendar yet, or that group's not on the calendar for that, and they'll have to make it work, because there have been various times that we've had, like, the Boy Scout troop, and we've had the flower thing.
Multiple events going on.
And we'll work together, so.
Okay. Well, he says June 21st, but the, the farmer's market's not on the 21st.
No, no. That's not, I'm talking about Halifax Pride.
Talking about the Pride, I mean.
Oh, that.
The Pride, right, yeah.
Okay, so, is that motion?
I'll make that motion to approve the use of the town green for a fur festival dated June 21st, 2025.
With a certificate of insurance.
With a certificate of insurance that I'm sure Tom Pratt was going to ask about.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, all right, I have 6:30.
All right, official time keep, 6:29.
We can maybe as well get started then.
Okay.
So we have two, two people, 6:30, to have applied for the zoning board of appeals. The first one that we have on the list here is Mr. Fryer. Do you want to come on up, because everything's recorded, so we need you to talk into the microphone? And do you want to just tell us who you are and why you want to be on the zoning board?
Name's Dave Frye, been in town 40-something, I lost count. Was on the planning board back in the early 80s, a couple terms, called Fire Department, a couple years, cool, half a dozen years. Just, just want to get involved, have some time, always around. I'm seeing things going on, but if someone has a decent idea of what they want to do with their property, everything's open to this discussion. And it shouldn't be just a rubber stamp yes or no. Things should be, I don't know, just broad about. And I just think it's time that, like I said, I have some time, I'm always around, I know a lot of people, talk to a lot of people, and what's older than maybe you guys talk to, you know? See, I'm a working guy, I don't have a suit. I don't even own a suit.
Good for you.
I told my wife, you better meet in a suit, I'm going to get back to it. It's just, the average people out there have a lot of different ideas, and a lot of them never get brought out. And I think people are afraid to even come up and say something. But, I don't know, I just, I thought it'd be something different. I mean, I tried the planning board, tried the Fire Department, I don't want to be a cop.
Too old, anyway.
Yeah, I don't want to be a selectman, because you got to wear a suit.
We could find one for you.
I just, I just thought I'd like to try.
Okay, is there anything particular about the zoning board that you're interested in, or?
No, it just, I, I do a lot of contracting with, I work for somebody, and we deal with variances and this and that. Something, I know something about, not a lot, but there's always ways to research stuff. And I see a lot of things that get turned down that shouldn't. Not just in this town, in different towns. Somebody wants to put a fence up, oh, geez, this six inches too close, and this and that. There's common ground for everything, if people come together.
One of the things that we've been trying to develop in the last couple of years is better educated committee members, especially volunteer committee members. And not as, meant as an insult to any person, but, but most of the committees like the zoning board or the conservation commission and all of those have become in the last 30 years, or last 20 years even, very complicated, and there's all kinds of regulations and stuff. So what we're trying to do is encourage the members to do that. And that's something you'd be comfortable with, I assume?
Yeah, yeah. I have no problem, you know, doing the legwork. I mean, I'm not, if I'm going to put something, myself behind something, I'm going to make sure it's, it's what it's supposed to be. I'm not just going to say, well, these two guys over here said yes, you'll say no. Well, I'm not just going to say yes because I like these two guys. It's going to be the way it is. And that's the way it's always been, so.
Okay.
I just thought I'd throw my hat in the rain and see what happens. I mean, I've been trying since July, so.
Oh, on this?
Yeah, I turned that in in July.
August, yeah, August 24th is what this is, but I don't know.
All that's we need to do.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody from the board, any questions?
So Dave, you mentioned you're inactive in the, in the construction business. Do you foresee any issues with conflicts of interest?
No, I mean, if so, then I can borrow.
Okay.
But usually generally we deal with engineers first, and they do all the legwork.
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's not like I can, I just go and do it. I'm a truck driver, basically, equipment operator.
Okay.
So if we get set plans for somewhere, we go and do the job, and it's all done, taken care of it before we even show up.
Yeah, and you're okay with going by the book, no matter who's presenting the plan?
Well, yeah, absolutely. If it's not by the book, then it shouldn't be done, period.
Okay.
And do you have any, appreciate your volunteering. Do you have any close relationships with any current members of the zoning board of appeals members?
No.
At this time? No close friendships, personal ties?
No, they're all dead.
No, I mean, the current zoning board members? Nothing, no, no close relationships?
I know John, other than that, just from the farm stand, but other than that, no.
And you can be independent of John on any form, if you determine, is that the right thing to do?
I buy my Christmas tree there.
Okay. Me, too.
This is an associate member, right?
It is.
It's not a full, you understand, that's not a full-time member, it's like a?
It's just an alternate.
It's the alternate.
If somebody does show up.
If somebody does show up, then you have, right.
So you can still attend every meeting, you can take part in the discussion?
Yes.
You wouldn't vote unless there were some...
Unless someone's missing.
Exactly. I understand that, but I go a lot of the...
And then I would just encourage you to read chapter 48, so zoning board is bound a lot by chapter 48, which is the zoning law, so I'd definitely recommend that and some of the requirements in there, because that's primarily what the zoning board of appeals is doing, is interpreting local zoning. primarily what the zoning board of appeals is doing, is determining local zoning.
Is there a zoning book?
There are zoning, yep, we could certainly get you those things.
Because I remember I was on the planning board, had the town issued you a book on the planning bylaws and one of them.
If you were appointed building commissioner, I'm certain to give you all the resources.
Okay. And how long will it take before I find that out?
Well, we had another applicant here, who's Mr. Cronin, who was supposed to be here at 6:30.
Yeah, I did contact him, he was going to be here. There was only, there was only one open as an associate member, so not saying, whatever, I'm just...
He was supposed to show up at the last zoning board meeting, the one that I was at, and he ended up showing up.
That's true, yeah. I think we heard from him that time, but we haven't heard from him this, this time yet. So I would say, why don't we just hold on to it, see for a couple of minutes, anyway, and then we can make a decision?
Works for me.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
All right. Intermunicipal agreement with Hanson for building commissioner.
Yeah, so this, I've mentioned before, Hanson is currently without a building commissioner, so in the interim, we are going to help him out a few hours a week, just so they can continue to operate, similar to what Bridgewater did for us when we were without a commissioner. So this just formalizes that agreement. It's the standard intermunicipal agreement template. As far as indemnification, the compensation, they're just going to pay us for what we would ultimately pay Ed.
It doesn't interfere with his obligations for us?
No, Halifax comes first, so he has to work his time in Halifax. If he, if he is going over there, it's a slow day here, and he goes over there during the day, then, you know, it's fine, doesn't interfere here, and he, you know, we're going to continue to pay him what he gets. If it's on to Halifax, if he has a busy week in Halifax, he needs to be here, he would do that on Friday or after hours, and they would pay his time and half.
Okay. And he's, he's okay with this?
Yes, absolutely.
Job that he doesn't mind doing? Okay.
Do we have a, do we have a ballpark, Cody, on how many hours Hanson's going to need?
No, I think the intermunicipal agreement is up to sixteen.
Yeah.
But it really varies. There could be a week where it's two, there could be, maybe they have a busy week and we have a slower week where it's twenty. I don't think it'll be, or twenty. I really think it would be no more than sixteen. But Halifax comes first, that's, that's the thing.
Yeah.
It's very clear, everyone understands that.
Sure.
If Ed is busy for forty full hours and he needs to be here that week, he's here all forty, and then if he can go over there on Friday or in the evenings, good, and that's good, but... So we don't, to that end, we don't care how long this agreement lasts either? No, not really. I mean, I think if it's, we have until the end of the fiscal year, and then we'll renew or revisit it, but I think...
Probably trying to fill that position a lot earlier than that, I would think.
Yeah, I think they're going to have to face challenges, similar, you know, we facing challenges when we fill the position, but, yeah, it's really, I think it's a good thing to help our neighbors out.
Yeah, and it's nice to be on the, I think I said it in the meeting before, it's nice to be on the other side of that equation, where towns are leaning on us and we're not having to lean on other communities.
Yeah.
Excuse me, what happened to him? The commissioner Hanson?
He no longer works there.
No longer employed, yeah.
I think he had the proper licenses or something, I don't know.
So Hanson actually had an inspector, right?
Yeah.
And then they had a commissioner, I believe the commissioner from maybe Hanover or one of the surrounding towns would sign off on certificates of occupancy, and then they lost both of those employees. I don't know how, why, just know they no longer have them, and they need some assistance.
Okay, so you need to approve, everybody's seen the contract?
Yeah, approve the IMA and allow me to sign.
Okay, so I'll make that motion, that we approve this intermunicipal agreement and that we authorize the town administrators to sign on our behalf.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Public nurse, public nurse health, public health nurse contract?
We could remove that, we are working through some legal challenge.
Okay, so that's tabled for now. Ambulance abatements, we have a request from the town accountant, I mean, to the town accountant from the fire department for abatement, December 2024, $119,067.52. So make that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, let's see, old business, town administrators update?
Did you want to give an update on Morse first?
Sure, I'll do that. So we did get a, just to make sure everyone knows, in November of 2023, the board issued a permit to Morse Brothers, Inc., relating to earth removal from their bogs in Halifax. Morse Brothers took the permit more or less under protest, and then they, they filed a lawsuit against the town of Halifax, essentially, without getting too deep into it, saying they didn't need, they shouldn't have had, shouldn't have had been required to get a permit. That case has come to a head as of January 15th, when the Superior Court issued an order allowing Morse Brothers' motion, essentially to say that they did not need any sort of earth, earth removal permit. Judge said the town of Halifax earth removal bylaw is invalid as applied to Morse Brothers' non-commercial, normal and customary agricultural earth removal activities, and that that's not subject to a permit, that's his decision. So the next step in the process is to consider an appeal to the next level court, which would probably be the appeals court. And the board is in consultation with, with counsel as to what the next step will be. We expect to have a decision on that next meeting. Can't really say anything more than that, the decision itself is available, it's a public record, but outside of that, that's, that's sort of where things stand. Okay, next up.
I just want to make sure that you guys are talking about the fact that it's in an aquifer protection zone, like that they need to have permit versus that, and that they're not supposed to have one within the aquifer protection zone, that should be mentioned. And I know that you can't say anything, please make sure that that's part of the council's conversation, because that is the major issue with that.
So the issue on this appeal is really even more basic than that, it's whether we can regulate it through the permit process at all, and if it was a factor like the aquifer protection law, or, or traffic and all of those kind of things, where the conditions on the appeal, on the permit. And this judge said we weren't permitted to do that. So that's the question of whether or not the appeals court will agree with them. But we haven't got to that stage yet.
Right, but I'm just reminding you that we do have a bylaw that states that we're not supposed to do it in the aquifer protection zone, so that's what you should make sure that the court knows. So I would think that an appeal would be in order because the town of Halifax has a law about it.
Okay. I think we've got that in mind, okay.
Other updates? Some very good news, we are in the process, kudos to Kathy Stanley, our energy manager, consultant, and myself, are in the process of finalizing a deal that we hope to bring before the board at your next meeting or one of the meetings in February, to buy electricity from the city of Brockton, and a 20% reduction for all of our town buildings. So, you know, basically, we're looking to buy credits from them, 20, 80 cents on the dollar, which is a huge savings for the town. If we spend hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on electricity, we will be able to save, you know, tens of thousands of dollars for at least their remainder of this fiscal year, next fiscal year.
That's all good news, good luck, thank you.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Brockton basically oversubscribed their purchase power agreement, so they have an advantage of credit.
They have extra.
And so we are able to capitalize on that. So again, Kathy was, has been instrumental in that.
Always good to have good financial news.
Yes. More good news, we've applied for a fire safety grant like we do every year through the fire department, $15,500, we've always been awarded for the last several years. We were notified last week that that, that the regulations had changed and included MBTA zoning as a requirement, and that the grant would be taken away ultimately if we did not comply, which we were not compliant at the time. I have to give Representative Sweets credit, he was on the phone with me and our fire department late into Friday evening, like eight, nine o'clock at night, working on behalf of us to make sure that grant wasn't in jeopardy, and we got notified that we would be getting a letter of award in the next week, so.
Great, fantastic, awesome. That's fantastic.
We had a joint budget meeting with the school committees and some members of the finance committee and boards of Selectman in Kingston on Thursday. Kingston and Plimpton are both in similar situations as Halifax regarding budgets, particularly at the school level. I mentioned before Halifax elementary schools level service budget was presented at a 23.1% increase. Kingston's was presented at a 20% increase. Kingston is not, I mean, Plimpton has not been presented yet, but it's anticipated to be around 17%. That's on top of a little over 13% for Silver Lake budget increase. We can afford somewhere in the range of 3.5% for the cost of education, Kingston can afford about 4%, and Plimpton can afford about three to three and a half. So, so we are all in a similar situation. It was good to hear the other communities, it was also good to see the collaboration. Selectman, Sealed, and Pratt were there, we had some members of the finance committee, and I think it was, you know, while these circumstances are not great, it was good to see all the communities in the room and talking, which you don't see very often, so.
And kudos to you, Cody, for, I know you were instrumental in getting that meeting put together. So it's nice to collaborate, we are a regional school at some part, so collaboration, I feel like is key. And it's, as you say, we're all kind of in the same boat, you know, so to me, that hints it, I don't think it's anything, any of the municipalities, you know, may or may not have done, I think you're seeing educational funding struggles across all of the state, so kudos to you for helping to get that meeting on the books.
Thanks.
Do you have round numbers as to what the cost would be for Halifax on all these budget increases?
To give you an idea, if we were to approve level service budgets for what's been requested from the elementary school in Silver Lake, Silver Lake's a little bit tougher because they haven't applied their revenue yet, but from what we estimate, we would be in a deficit of somewhere in the range of two to $2.5 million if you were to spread that out across the tax base through a proposition two and a half override, that's in the range of somewhere $800 to $1,000 for an average, the average assessed home, which in Halifax is about $550,000. So obviously, as value goes down, the impact's a little less, as value goes up, it's more. So again, very, very preliminary, the schools, we're trying to work with them to get some more solid figures. We will certainly look to have a discussion on your meeting on the 11th as to, you know, what direction, no final decisions, obviously, but I do think the town seems to start discussing what direction they want to look at, whether that means, you know, cuts, and we've asked the schools to start preparing what that would look like. We've asked all of our departments, you know, part of the budget this year was to submit a 10% budget cut, so we know what those cuts would look like. Silver Lake School Committee did ask the administration to prepare a 2% budget increase. With that 2% increase, it included elimination of all after-school sports, all extracurricular activities, and several staff members, I can't remember off the top of my head how many, but it was several teachers and paraprofessionals, and that was with a 2% increase. So really just need to work together to figure out what is the best path forward, and again, that's really looking at cuts, you know, from school to other departments, a potential proposition two and a half override, so let the voters decide, or a combination of both. But I think working with the other communities is paramount here, because the last thing we want in particular is Kingston approves an override, Plimpton approves an override, and Halifax maybe doesn't even consider one, but then we're on the hook, right, for at least the Silver Lake portion, too. Not to say that, you know, the voters are going to decide and they have that right, but I think we at least need to make sure we're considering these things and figuring those out. So we'll have a little more in-depth conversation on the 11th about that. And then two more quick things, Wage and Personnel is having their annual public hearing on February 11th, so the same night as that meeting, which will be good because the finance committee will be there, so we can talk about those financial impacts. And the last is Government Study Committee has been working hard, is looking to meet with all boards, committees, departments in the next couple of months. We're finalizing a questionnaire that we're going to use to ask everybody the same information, just to get an understanding of what operations look like, what, what people think works, what doesn't work, and hopefully gives that information to make suggestions.
Good. The MBTA community zoning issue.
Yes, so we know the Supreme Judicial Court rules, you know, basically that the law is constitutional, although the regulations were not accurately put into effect. The governor immediately responded and said that they were going to issue emergency regulations. Those emergency regulations have come out. What that means for us is technically, as of right now, we are in compliance. The requirement is that as of February 13th, towns who are, have not adopted zoning have to submit an action plan. So you may recall, we submitted an action plan in January of 2023, which just, in essence, that we'd investigate the topic, which we did. That, that's a new requirement, again, for this set of regulations, so we have until February 13th to decide if that's something the town wants to do, and if the town were to submit an action plan, we would have until July, it's mid-July.
14th.
Yeah, July 14th, to have adopted some sort of zoning. So that is something, again, we will have on the 11th as well, to determine if the board wants to submit an action plan, and ultimately buy a couple more months of compliance, or if the board chooses to not give us an action plan, then we would be out of compliance as of the 13th. But again, we'll have that on the agenda, I'll be careful.
And the results of that, which include the Attorney General's activities, so.
Right.
All right, anything else in your report?
I have a lot to say about that, the MBTA thing. Can I shut up and sit? So the other parts of the whole entire thing is that they're saying that the Attorney General doesn't, I mean, sorry, that Mara Healy doesn't have an emergency right to put in that preamble, and therefore that is being battled against, and also Ken Sweets comes to be clutch again, and he already has done stuff, written legislation, three different pieces of legislation that will go against her being able to penalize different, any, any town that's not in compliance. So again, that's something that we really need to keep our eye on, and we just had over 700 people saying no at town meetings, so I think that by going against what the people at town meetings say is wrong. So I would say that you just keep fighting, because that's what we all want, and, and try to help the state realize that they can't do this, because it doesn't behoove any of us to overextend our water supply, our schools, we're already talking about all these problems. So if we keep adding to the problem by adding housing, then we're going to have even more of a problem with water, with schools, with taxes, because the developers are corporations, and they're going to come into the town, they're going to build it, and they're going to leave us with the problems. So we really shouldn't be adding on to an issue, in my opinion, especially when we have legislation being three pieces of legislation that are already in getting rid of the penalties of MBTA housing. This is, again, tyrancy, and we need to not go with the tyrant. This is not best for the towns, and it's not what we want, and we, the people, are the ones who speak, you know what I mean? So when we said no, we meant it, obviously, right? So I would urge the board to keep fighting, because that's what your people who have elected us want you to do, and go along with the Ken Sweets' bills that are now in process to get rid of these events, and, which Friday night was it, last Friday night, so whatever the date was, the 17th. We have other huge, like the IFF and the firefighters, they're all seeing this, and they're like, what? You can't just slide this into a grant now and do this, this is like a threat that they're trying to force down our throats. They're all on board now, so you have zero, like you, I won't get into the, all the numbers, but a lot of, a lot of us have been on the phone with different chiefs around the state, and it's also starting to spread to other departments, and I'm not going to get into all of those departments, but there are big departments such as police and things of that nature, where they're like, no, we're done. It's time to stand and fight and tell her no, because we like our town the way it is, we bought our properties the way it is, so let's go and fight. We have, we have things in, in line now to fight, and our town just said no, and they didn't just say no in a shortfall.
Okay. Can you, by the way, can you, I think you asked, we have Mr. Sweets come in and see us at some point?
So I sent, the board had previously sent letters to both Representative Lenatra and Sweets about a meeting in the future, I followed up and invited them both in at our second meeting in February, or if there were another date in the next couple of months that worked. I have heard back from Representative Sweets that he's available. I have not heard back from Representative Lenatra's office, we'll, I'll follow back up again this week, and if I don't hear, we'll, we'll get something on the books.
Can you make sure that he knows that that's, obviously, an, an issue that we're interested in is the MBT, I'm sure he knows.
Yeah, he's a very communicative, we've spoken many a times, so he's aware. And then one thing I wanted to mention that I forgot was, congratulations to Jim Walters, who is on the State Association of Finance Committee now.
Nice.
Representing the town of Halifax, so it's good to have some representation at the state level, so congratulations to Jim.
Got a boy, Jim. Be an aggressive guy.
Yes, he will, that's awesome.
Okay, so I'm going to come back now, we have not heard from Mr. Cronin, so I think we should take up Mr. Frye's application for the zoning board of appeals. I know Mr. Frye, I know his family, his wife used to work on the finance committee secretary when I was on the finance committee 35 years ago, so I've known him a long time. He's a good man, and I think he has a background in, in town interest, that he will be a, a very good member of the zoning board of appeals, so I would recommend him.
I'll second that recommendation.
Okay, any discussion, any questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.